Okay, we are back on the record. It is 5:30. It is time for public testimony. The rules for public testimony are on the screen, and I would ask the speakers to be respectful of these rules. I am not going to read them all out, but I would remind you that comments directed by name personnel are out of order. Please don't make me rule you out of order. Madam, please read the next three folks. Two minutes each. When you get to 30 seconds, the yellow light will come on. Please start wrapping up your comments. Thank you.
First up for public testimony, we have Chris Jackins, followed by Eliza Rankin, and then Robin Landy-Amedon.
My name is Chris Jackins, Box 84063, Seattle, 98124, on the National Science Foundation Grant. Two points. Number one, the board report has gone from six pages to eight pages since last week, adding four principles, including changing the culture of science. Number two, multiple board members at the last meeting expressed concern that earlier information should have been provided. Please delay this item to allow the board to do its due diligence. On the Loyal Heights Commissioning Report, five points. Number one, a report states, quote, "The emergency shutdown button in the boiler room is reversed. The boiler was enabled to run when the button was pushed in," unquote. This sounds like a good thing to have gotten fixed. Number two, a circulation pump is still noisy. Number three, is it true that classrooms have gotten smaller because space was allocated to teacher collaboration rooms? Number four, the playground size has been dramatically reduced. How is this affecting school recesses? Number five, the district is required on many projects to not use schools in ways that would create or aggravate racial imbalance. Please discuss this issue. On the proposed SEA contract, three points. Number one, a report on the contract states that the agreement includes mandatory professional development for principals on the topic of educator diversity. Number two, such a condition would affect employees who are represented by a separate union past the principal's bargaining unit. Number three, imposing such a condition would appear to be illegal. Thank you.
Hi. Happy first day of the school year. I'm a parent of two SPS students in the far northeast corner of Seattle Public Schools. My kids don't tell me anything, but they seemed pretty happy at the end of the day, so I think they had a good first day. My oldest son is a fifth grader, so we're pretty used to that controlled chaos that happens on the first day. We don't attend one of the beautiful new buildings I've been seeing in photos from ribbon cuttings over the past week, but we have a sweet little mid-century school with the warm patina that can only happen with 60 or so years of use from thousands and thousands of elementary school students. At Rising Star Elementary, though, formerly Van Assalt, students are welcome today into a construction site, and they'll be attending school in a work zone for months. I have photos that I'm happy to email to you. Students at Rising Star are over 95% students of color, 19% students with disabilities, and 83% low-income. These are the students that are centered in the district's new strategic plan, their furthest from educational justice. Families were told that work taking place would be finished over the summer and wouldn't affect school this year, but construction now is displacing fifth-grade classrooms, special education, and ELL students, and there will be ongoing noise and dust that will disrupt everyone in the building. I'm told that there was unexpected damage found in the roof that's delayed the work, but it seems as though the students and staff are the ones paying the biggest price without ample support or communication from the district. Special education students are crowded into rooms meant for half as many students. IAs have lost their office space. The principal, the AP, and administrative staff are in the copy room so that special education can have de-escalation spaces in what was, used to be their offices. Staff is doing the best that they can, but they're already maxed out and stressed, and it's only the first day of school. Please provide a community meeting with Seattle Public Schools officials, paid interpreters, to answer family questions, and share a timeline and a plan to let them know that their students' learnings won't be totally derailed. Please also provide monthly updates to the community until the project is completed. They'll understand the inconvenience, but they just need and deserve to be supported and included and informed about what's going on. Thank you.
Hi, good evening. I'm Robin Amidon, and I'm here this evening on behalf of the Low-Income Housing Institute to take this opportunity to introduce to you all a proposed new affordable housing development in D5, in the Aurora-Lichten Springs community. And we hope to have the opportunity to create partnerships with the Seattle Public School System. Our development site at 86th and Aurora is proximate to several great SPS schools, and we'd like to invite the school district to inform us of collaborations and partnerships, kinds of services that our family support case manager at our building might be able to offer toward the goal of school success. We will be breaking ground, if we get the funding in line, in June of 2021, and opening in August of 2022. Our Lake City development, the Tony Lee Apartments, had tremendous support from phenomenal people in the Lake City Schools, and we'd like to repeat that in the Lichten Springs community. We anticipate also that these units might speak to the housing needs of administrative staff, custodial people, teachers' aides, perhaps new teachers joining your school system. Our rents estimated sit quite a bit below market, and we really are endeavoring to do community outreach locally and institute a community preference to help families avoid displacement and economic dislocation. I anticipate with the unit mix that we will probably be adding about 55 school-age children to the community, and we'd like to do our part to support everything that you and your employees do each and every day. Thank you.
Lastly, we have Christopher LuBerg.
Thank you for this opportunity. I'm here speaking about minorities in the HCC program. The HCC program has been an absolute blessing for my son Alex. In kindergarten, he was sent to the principal's office almost daily. He wasn't learning, and he was hindering the teacher's ability to serve the rest of the class. The neighborhood school was simply not equipped to meet his needs. My understanding of the concern of the HCC program is the racial bias. In my experience, the program is not racially biased at all. The access might be racially biased, but the program itself is not. Don't confuse them, please. If the HCC program were discontinued, it would harm more minorities than would help. Let me make two points. First, as a minority boy, the social and behavioral issues that would have to be addressed if he were to return to his neighborhood school would be met with more punishment, isolation, and medical recommendations than his non-minority peers would receive. Second, the families of means will just send their kids to private schools if the HCC program were discontinued, and the kids from families without the means to send their kids to a private school would be left to fend for themselves. I know this because I've talked to many of the parents. In conclusion, please don't discontinue the HCC program. If you do, it will disproportionately harm the minority children in the program. You spoke about gratitude earlier. I am very grateful that I live in a place that has this program that allows my son to achieve academically, and more importantly, socially and emotionally become the person that he can be. Thank you.
This concludes the public testimony list.
Excuse me. If there are anybody else here that wishes to testify, please check in as soon as you can, and you have your opportunity for your two minutes.
Hi, everyone. My name's Eileen Haskell, and I'm a proud parent of three here at Seattle Public School. Sorry for my lateness. I was just notified of this public testifying, and I felt so passionate about the subject that I wanted to leave work and just come here and express my experience. I have three children, two in Fairmont Park, one at Lafayette Elementary. They're all under 10, so I'm a very busy household. However, so my daughter, two of my daughters are HCC-identified, and it was unbeknownst to me what HCC even meant when we first stumbled upon it five years ago. However, the experience she's had in this program has been exceptional. When she first started kindergarten, my bright, smart, amazing little girl had a behavioral change. She become, she isolated herself a lot from her peers. She was so terrified of public speaking or any sort of social interactions, she started to revert to having accidents in her pants. It was very difficult for me trying to understand, you know, why there was so much anxiety. And then the second behavioral issue occurred when she started bullying another little girl, and I thought, how could my sweet little baby do something like this? Was it something in my parenting? Was it our environment? What was it? So for me, it was a difficult time trying to understand, trying to work with her, and trying to talk with her. And she was tested later that year and identified as an HCC, and I didn't even know what that means, and I had to do some research. And that if we were to accept the HCC program, we would have to move to a different school that was outside of our neighborhood, which we were hesitant to do because she had just get, gotten used to all her peers and the kindergarten teachers and everything. But because of the behavioral issues that we experienced, we thought, maybe she needed a different type of support. Maybe she needed a place where she felt like it was more for her. Did I go over my time? Okay. So bottom line is, I'm thankful for HCC. It allowed her to be more confident now, and she's so happy, and she's really, you know, had a dramatic change in her behavior. And so I, you know, I wish this for every parent, and I think there are a lot of kids out there that could use this support, and if you were to take this away, I don't know where I would turn to because it's not, you know, I don't know where I would go because it's not like, it's, she's deficient in any aspects of her.
Thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Okay. We usually do a second round of board comments, as should folks wish to comment on the public testimony. Any takers? Director Mack.
First, I want to thank you for advocating on the Rising Star School and the need for some community engagement. I think that has been heard. I don't know what is actually been going on, but I appreciate that testimony, and I want to echo it back to staff, too. I know that they are working closely with the principal, but the additional community engagement would likely be very helpful. It is a tragedy that that situation's going on right now, and I'm glad that they're trying to work through it and look forward to that project being finished and making it through. But thank you for that. Also, I really want to thank you for bringing forward the Nespit Family Housing Project to our attention, bringing, you know, raising it in our consciousness that this is coming down the line. I, as chair of the Operations Committee, the, a lot of the work that comes through is the planning around boundaries and student assignment and all of that kind of stuff, and when we have additional housing being built, we need to consider that in those planning. So I appreciate that you're coming forward with it, and that I'd like to connect you to Mr. Podesta in the back to make some connections with the district so you can get tied into the planning work that's going on from that standpoint. So I really appreciate that. And thank you for coming forward and giving your perspectives on your experience in the highly capable cohort.
Anyone else? Seeing none, we move to action items. We are taking first number four from the consent agenda, Bex 4 Resolution 2019-20-5, Acceptance of the Building Commissioning Report for the Loyal Heights Elementary School Modernization and Edition Project. This came before OPS August 15th. Consideration motion, please.
I move that the school board adopt Resolution 2019/20-5, accepting the building commissioning report for the Loyal Heights Elementary School Project.
Second?
Second.
Yes!
Just opening up the file.
Chief Podesta, take it away.
As we talked about at introduction, a commissioning report is a third-party quality assurance assessment done on our building systems. When this action was introduced, 170 of the 171 items in the report had already been resolved. So the things on this list are things that the commissioning agent found and worked with the team to resolve. There was a gas meter that needed to be dealt with, and that was taken care of in August. So this work is done. This really ties a bow around the building systems, and so I think we're ready to move on unless there are specific questions about the report.
Comments, questions, concerns from my colleagues. Director Pinkham, you're the one that moved this off consent. Have at it.
Thank you. Yeah, I guess what was brought up in public comment, I think some things seem straightforward, but when the emergency shutdown button is the opposite of what it's supposed to be, glad it was fixed. Also, the, I guess, was brought up in public testimony, the circulation pump, do you know if that will, the noise generated from that, will that be addressed, or is it planned to see how we can maybe soundproof the room, or?
I believe it has been addressed already. I will confirm, but again, if it was on the report, it's been resolved.
Other comments, questions, concerns from my colleagues? And I've got chops, but I'm not going to bring up a noisy pump to you in a legislative meeting, ever. Roll call, please.
Director Burke?
Aye.
Director DeWolff?
Aye.
Director Geary?
Aye.
Director Mack?
Aye.
Director Pinkham?
Aye.
Director Harris?
Aye.
This motion is passed unanimously.
We are moving to number six from the consent agenda, Bex 5 and Distressed School Grant. Approval of four actions related to the West Woodland Modernization and Edition Project. This came before OPS August 15th for approval. Motion, please.
Okay, take a deep breath. I move that the school board, A, authorize the superintendent to execute A/E Contract K1352 with McGrannahan Architects in the amount of $1,613,228 plus reimbursable expenses not to exceed $25,000 for architectural and engineering services for the West Woodland Elementary School renovation and addition project with any minor additions, deletions, and modifications deemed necessary by the superintendent, and to take any necessary actions to implement the contract. And, B, authorize the superintendent to accept and obligate 2017 distressed school grant funds in the amount of $6 million for the West Woodland Elementary School renovation and addition project budget. And, C, approve a one-time fund transfer of $2,500,000 from the K3 class size reduction grant to the West Woodland Elementary School renovation and addition project. And, D, approve a one-time fund transfer of $2,600,000 from the Bex 5 program contingency to the West Woodland Elementary renovation and addition project.
Take it away, Chief Podesta.
Thank you, and I apologize for not being ready to speak to this.
Uh, excuse me. Second.
There we go. Oops, sorry.
Thank you, guys.
I apologize for not recalling the revisions when you asked earlier. These revisions were responsive to questions from the board at introduction, just about points in the bar. Asked us to clarify the total project budget to make sure that the action was clear about that, what that was. And then there was a concern about, well, we're transferring money from the K3 class reduction grant, and that's appropriate because that's what the money is going to be used for, just transferring it into the budget, the project budget, so it can be expended for its stated purpose. And so we're, we added some, a lot of this is assembling money to fund a project, and that's what, we just clarified those points.
Comments, questions, concerns? Director Pinkham.
Yeah, since I was the one that pulled this, I just, again, wanted to make sure since there's an update for this consent agenda that it was highlighted.
No, and I appreciate that. I was just looking at the old bar when you called me up before, which, of course, wasn't going to have the revisions, but.
Director Mack? Roll call, please.
Director DeWolff?
Aye.
Director Geary? Director Mack?
Aye.
Director Pinkham?
Aye.
Director Burke?
Aye.
Director Harris?
Aye.
This motion is passed unanimously.
Okay, C1, action items. Number one, approval of grant from Amazon Future Engineer to support science, technology, engineering, and math STEM education activities came before ANF August 19th.
Approval.
Motion, please.
I move that the board authorize the superintendent to accept the grant from the Amazon Future Engineer Program in an amount not to exceed $300,000.
Second.
Chief DeBacker, take it away.
There are no changes to this bar other than the clarification that Scott Pinkham asked last week about which the other three schools. Those three schools are still discussing this and considering it. That would be Maple, Rainier Valley, Aki, and now the World School as well. We still have three slots open. Rainier View. No, yeah.
Comments, questions, concerns from my colleagues? Director Pinkham? Director DeWolff, please.
Thank you, President Harris. I just wanted to elevate something. I did some research, particularly found some concerning information, particularly as we think about the Seattle World School, from the MIT Technology Review. It is entitled, "Amazon is the Invisible Backbone of ISIS Immigration Crackdown." And I think what is concerning to me, particularly as we consider the 350, more than 350 students at Seattle World School, representing more than 30 countries and 38 languages, just want to read a few things that at least were concerning for me from an investigation. I guess it was created by The Intercept
Director DeWolff.
in partnership with MiHNT, the National Immigration Project, and Immigration Defense Project. So this report found that Amazon has played as central a role, as Palantir, in providing the backbone infrastructure for many of ISIS and DHS's key programs. It has enjoyed a cozy relationship with the federal government, particularly in a time where we've seen an increased enforcement of immigration. I think what is really concerning to me is that all of the data that the, and the algorithms powering the ICM, which is run by Palantir, are now being migrated to the Amazon web services in their entirety, and this, to me, is part of one of the reasons I will not be voting for this, particularly, again, in respect for our students at Seattle World School, but all of our immigrant refugee students in Seattle Public Schools.
Director DeWolff, can you give us, please, a citation for that article?
I would be happy to send that to you. I don't see it on this page, but I will, yes, I can give you the citation.
Thank you.
It's MIT Technology Review. The title is "Amazon is the Invisible Backbone of ISIS Immigration Crackdown." I will, I'll get the citation.
And Chief Counsel Narver, when we get that citation, can we add that to the record? Yes, please. Come on up.
Yes, we, I think there's been an adequate cite to that. I'm sure we can add the technical cite without further board action, get that in the minutes of the meeting.
Thank you. Other comments, questions, concerns from my colleagues? Director Mack, please.
I think in light of the, the article just raised, I'm curious to what extent Amazon is actually engaging or just donating the funds in this program. Do they actually have any hands-on connection to the running of the FIRST Robotics program?
They have, with the FIRST Robotics program and with the Future Engineer program, they do have mentors that come in and work with the students in those after-school programs.
Comments, questions, concerns from my colleagues? Seeing none, I will bite, and I agree with Director DeWolff that some of the infrastructure in this country, as it addresses our folks of need, our folks of color, and some of the deplorable shenanigans out of Washington, DC, are extraordinarily troubling. I would suggest to you that there are a great many other technology companies that are also embedded, deeply embedded and intertwined in the so-called security industry that are deplorable and probably, no, not probably, definitely immoral. On the other hand, my duty, sitting here for me, and I only speak for myself, is to our 53,000 students. Amazon is well aware of my concern about what has happened to our city, given their presence, and I have to balance the greater good for our students as opposed to a national security and other very ugly actions by both Amazon and a great many other technology companies. And having FIRST Washington partnering with us is a very exciting concept to me for our students' greater good. I will be voting in favor of this resolution. Director Geary, and then Director Burke?
So in, in reviewing the article, it appears to me that the connection seems to be that the agencies purchased the cloud service offered by Amazon and could have, I suppose, purchased the cloud services offered by Microsoft or somebody else. These are government agencies. They are our federal government, which I think on some level, while I don't currently agree with the actions of our federal government, I would prefer that our federal government be using cloud services that are American companies over cloud services that were not. And that until we, if and when we decide as an agency that we're going to restrict our engagement with companies that are engaging with federal parts of the federal government that we don't agree with to provide infrastructure services before we will engage with them ourselves, I, it seems to me that we need to be consistent because, again, this is the type of thing that if we're going to be doing it based upon cloud services being offered to federal agencies that are engaging in practices that one or several of us may find, given any particular branch, we don't agree with what they're doing, we're going down a rabbit hole of inconsistency. It seems that the big issue is that our federal government has bought cloud services from Amazon. And I'm not prepared at this point to start picking and choosing which of those huge entities, be it Microsoft, be it Amazon, that we're not going to accept services from and, and backtrack. I mean, how many other places are we accepting things from Amazon that are completely unrelated to their cloud services that, in order for us not to appear to be hypocrites and/or to be consistent with what we're taking for some students and not taking for others and leaving some kids without? That's, it's too amorphous at this point. We would need, we would need more time, more consistency to understand if those are the kinds of policies that we're going to implement across the board. This particular grant, I went to a luncheon for and saw the difference that these services make in the lives of kids who have access to it. It can be some of the only times that they get to work in teams around tech, and it can be life-changing for them. And so I, I am going to accept this money. I'm not going to say And so, I, I am going to accept this money. I'm not going to say no. I'm going to accept the grant. I'm going to hope that it changes the lives of many, many students. And if and when we decide that we're going to come up with a policy as a board that's going to say no to receiving monies from any, uh, agencies that are engaging with the current federal government or branches thereof that are engaging in practices that we don't agree with, then we need to do that by policy.
Director Burke, and then Director Mack?
First, I want to thank Director DeWolf for bringing this up because I think this is the type of conversation that really helps us as a board get our values out there and, and kind of work through these, these sort of issues because a lot of these aren't black and white. They're not clean lines of, we do this because of, you know, for particular reasons. I will be supporting this. Um, my lens that I'm looking at this from is, um, are we investing in their growth and their infrastructure? Or are they investing in ours? And what is the return on that investment? I believe that we can have, as an educational institution, more impact on our students' outcomes with this support. And they may become future Amazon engineers, or they may not, but, um, in either case, that is a, a, a benefit for our students that this external funding will provide. I, um, could potentially be in a different position if we were funding something that supports the expansion and growth of the kind of the Amazon monolith and infrastructure because I do have some concerns about that. But in this case, I will be supporting this action, and I'm super excited about what it will allow us to bring to our students.
Director Mack?
I can echo the comments made by my colleagues around the, um, the lack of clarity in our policies of denying funds, um, for, from large corporations that do all sorts of things and that 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 level of consistency, that's a, that's a big question mark for me. Um, and that the, um, this work and this project is actually, it is a really, it's, it's an amazing, um, opportunity for a lot of our, our students. Um, so I support it from that perspective, but I think the article that is brought forward raises a, a question that I need to get educated on. I think maybe as a board we need to get educated on, and we may remain not want to take board action depending on where things lie. I think that the question of what is our policy around, because I, I apologize for being ignorant about this, but what is our policy around ISIS coming to our schools? I mean, Seattle has a safe. I need to be educated on exactly what. Right, so, so this is, I need to be educated as a board member.
And you mean ICE, not ISIS.
Thank you. I do. I mean ICE, not ISIS. Apologies, that was a terrible, um, right, you're like, you're great, no. Um, I need, I need to be educated as a board, uh, as a board member, and it would be helpful, um, maybe this is a longer conversation, but I would like to get educated as to what our practice and policies are in keeping our students safe in regards to ISIS immigration and, and the things that are going on. So, hello, Mr. Boy.
Hello.
I, I don't know that I'm asking for tonight to get the full, because we're not prepared for it, but.
Two sentences.
I am not going to educate you tonight, but I do want to briefly say, Ronald Boy, Senior ISIS General Counsel, that I am happy to announce that, um, not only did we previously have a procedure that protected our kids that are immigrants, we just did some updates to that procedure that were just signed off by, uh, Superintendent today, which make it, um, make a little bit stronger because we heard that there were issues with, um, warrants, um, from ICE being presented. So now we're making it very clear that it must be a judicial warrant. And I will send you those procedures, uh, tomorrow morning or tonight, uh, so you can review them and see that we do have really strong protections for our students, um, in relation to ICE.
Would this be an appropriate thing to come through one of the committees, like Ops, at some point?
Yeah, I'd be happy to present the procedure.
And any changes to superintendent procedures are attached to the Friday memo, correct?
Yep.
Terrific, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Director Pinkham, did you have comments, questions, concerns?
Uh, just some comments. I want to first, uh, thank Director DeWolf for bringing this up, you know, because I think at least daylighting, something like that, and, uh, letting, then possibly if our families opt to, hey, if that's a concern to them, then it's daylight to them and, and let them make the decision what they want to do. And I, I plan to vote for this because I think it, what it is is supporting our students. And, but the more we can share with our, uh, families and communities out there, I think it's helpful as well. So, thank you, Director DeWolf.
Director DeWolf, did you have other comments, questions, concerns, sir?
Just that I, if this board is really truly committed to that, then I hope we work quickly to, to create a policy that actually outlines this process because what is most concerning to me is that this, this specific company, um, collects this, these dollars that then turns around, uh, and does these projects, um, that make us feel good and, and make us feel like we're going to be getting some money to be supporting our students. Those same dollars that are hurting families across this country are then going to be turned back, uh, in a positive light, um, to supporting a lot of those students. Bailey Gatschard Elementary here, a lot of immigrant refugee students there. I just was with those, that community this summer. So I think for me, that is deeply concerning. Amazon holds 62% of the highest level authorizations for this database, usually needed to handle data for law enforcement and the tracking. And, and I just, I, I just, I can't support this, uh, particularly given the amount of immigrant refugee students, not only in our community, but, um, Seattle World School students that are right in my own neighborhood, so.
Which is your right. Thank you. Roll call, please.
Director Burke? Director DeWolf?
Hello.
Director Geary?
Aye.
Director Mack?
Aye.
Director Pinkham?
Aye.
Director Harris?
Aye.
This motion is passed with a vote of five to one.
Action item number two, Discovery Research K-12, DRK-12 grant from the National Science Foundation. This came before A and F August 19th for approval. Motion, please.
I move that the board authorize the superintendent to accept the Discovery Research K-12, DRK-12, grant from the National Science Foundation, which was awarded on July 1st, 2019 in the amount of $500,000 per year for three years for a total of $1,500,000 for the three-year grant period. Second.
Oh, Debacker, take it away, please.
Just a, a few additional items from last week's introduction. Um, the University of Washington applied for this grant for three years, November of 2016, 2017, and 2018. And they were awarded the grant on June 21st of 2019. You were informed that we were a recipient, or we would be a recipient, of part of that grant for professional development for teachers in early July. The PD funds, um, will, will not be used to supplant what we approved in terms of the science adoption, uh, earlier this spring. It is really a supplement to, and is really around making sure that our teachers are ready to teach to the culturally and linguistically diverse students in our district. Thus, the explanation for why we put additional information into the equity analysis of the bar. So in response to, um, Citizen Chris Jenkins' question about how the bar grew, it is around that equity analysis that we thought was very important as we worked with that. Uh, the grant will provide an additional two days of PD each summer to focus on the culturally responsive science teaching. Um, it is part of a network of elementary, secondary teachers, principals, families, specialists, and researchers. It is a grant that is part of a networked improvement community out of the Carnegie Foundation. Um, and it has been used with Dr. Thompson. You met her last week, and she is also here today. She has done this with the Highline Public Schools and other teachers working across Western Washington.
Comments, questions, concerns? Director Burke?
I have a, a question regarding the, the funding and how it, um, how it is articulates the, it looks like in the timeline for implementation, there is 2.0 FTE staff associated with this. At 500,000 per year, is they, where is the additional funding going? Is some of that go to University of Washington, or does it go to our educators, or what is the, how does the, where's, where's the money go?
Okay, um, if you're referring to page seven on the board agenda item, under the timeline for implementation, I believe, is that correct? Um, you're correct in that there are we two FTE, uh, that will be funded through this, and then also the professional development that will happen. There's also point two, um, secondary specialist who will also be working with this program. And, um, for more specifics, I do have assistance with Mary Margaret here and also Jessica Thompson, if you prefer.
Yeah, that, that would be helpful for me because it looks like the 2.0 staff works out to 1.0 specialist and five of point two.
That's correct. Absolutely, Director Burke, that's exactly correct. Um, we, we will not be funding our secondary specialist this year becau- in that way because it would take a point two release, um, and we couldn't do that at this moment. So we'll be paying our secondary specialist with extra time only for this year, at the anticipation that the following year we'll actually hire our secondary specialist as a point two release to help assist in the grant. And you are correct that that adds up to 1.0. And then the additional funding is for elementary science specialists who will be able to go into the field and work directly with teachers, um, in a coaching, um, and in coaching position and collecting data.
Thank you. So I guess that, that's, the root of my question is that, it looks like that makes, you know, 200,000 plus of the 500. Where is the remaining 300 allocated to?
To the professional development. You are correct on that as well. So for the release time for the teachers and for the additional time in the summer, um, that will be paid. And then there's also, um, what we call professional learning communities. So those are hours after the school day that we also pay teachers for. So the additional resources will go directly to funding teachers.
Can, one more clarification question. When I was looking at the research around this and, you know, NSF grants related science work, it looked to me like there's a lot of, um, sort of grants that fund grants that fund grants. There's a, um, the research supports future grants in, in a lot of ways, so the work builds on itself. And that brings up the question, well, what is funding the, you know, is this award directly from the National Science Foundation to us, or is it through University of Washington? So University of Washington is getting their operating costs paid separately from this grant.
That's correct.
This is just our costs.
That's correct. So the total grant is $3 million, and this, this component of it, which is articulated in the bar, is specifically just for us.
Okay, thank you. I, I raised some of my concerns at the last meeting about, um, NSF grants, and I'm, in looking more at the, I can't not accept money for the district, but I can in good conscience support this, so I will be abstaining on this vote.
Director Mack?
I appreciate the clarification from Ms. Debacker that this won't be supplanting, but I, I'm kind of curious why not? When we don't have the budget for the elementary PD already, if I remember correctly. So this seems to me like this is a, it's a, it's a windfall of wondrous dollars coming in to pay for PD that we committed to when we adopted elementary, but we don't have dedicated budget for in the future, as I remember that discussion. So I'm kind of curious as to why we're saying this isn't supplanting. It should, I would think it should be offsetting the costs that we've already committed to.
I do. I'm, I'm going to attempt to answer this, and then if Mary Margaret has something to add. Keep in mind that when the University of Washington was applying for this grant over the past three years, we did not have the science adoption even on the table when they started this. This grant is about instruction. It's not about curriculum. And I think that's the difference between it. So, um, it, it is about helping teachers get better at teaching, and no matter what curriculum is around it. So, I, I, I think that the, the funding is there that we need at this point, especially as we think about how we are accelerating our elementaries. Remember, we're only bringing a few on in the first year? So not all elementary teachers are getting the, the PD around the new science curriculum.
But the approval that was, the, the board approved curriculum adoption included committing dollars, committing future dollars, and it was very specific that particularly for elementary, the PD requirements were substantial. And I recall voting no on that, uh, on the ele- elementary adoption, uh, primarily for that reason. And the PD is the additional cost that we have committed to that we don't have revenue for. I'm, I'm kind of confused as to, this is PD for the elementary. I'm not, I'm really not understanding why it's not actually being used to offset the already committed to costs that we don't have the dollars for. I don't, I, I, I understand that the grant was applied for, and it wasn't a guarantee that we were ever going to get it, but to me, it seems like it should be, this is where the funds are coming from to do the PD that we committed for, or at least part of it.
So, Director Mack, um, the PD funding that was allocated by the board in association with the elementary instructional materials adoption does actually help teachers understand how to use the instructional materials. So how to set up labs and how to use the digital platform and how to interface with the new texts that are within the context of the curriculum. And that, that funding has been allocated by the board, and those resources are available to us, which is exactly the monies that we had been use, will be using to help teachers understand how to use the instructional materials. This grant specifically was written to help teachers with their professional learning around culturally and linguistic diverse students. So students who are furthest from educational justice, as is associated with our strategic plan. So our strategic plan specifically asks us to dig deeper and to think about those children who have not been able to reach and access scientific literacy, and how are we going to make some adjustments to their practices so that every single child will have an opportunity to reach? And that's the context of the grant. So although they might look all the same because it's science education, one is specifically identifying students who are furthest from opportunities in science education and digging more deeply with teachers to help them associate those kinds of learnings with those children. And the other is more nuts and bolts of this is how you use the instructional materials, these are the digital tools, these are the books that are associated with it. And that's the piece that the board did allocate funding for, and we are using those funds to move forward.
Other questions, comments, concerns from my colleagues? Uh, I'd like to push back on Chief Debacker's statement that we didn't know we were going to do a curriculum adoption in November. I could not more vehemently disagree with you, and I will appreciate you were not here at the time. That came from pushback from this board to the blanket adoptions that was well underway. And I again ask when this board was advised of this NSF grant application? We spent dozens and dozens of hours being learned up, and I don't recall it. And I did very specifically ask for that information in intro.
Let me correct my words. Um, we did not have a science adoption going on when the University of Washington applied for this in November of 2016 and 2017.
We did in November 2018, correct?
Correct, correct.
Thank you.
You were, um, the board was informed during the deliberation process, uh, of the science curriculum that we were, um, part of, that we had been invited to participate in the grant that was being sought after. I don't know exactly when, but, um, Ms. Welch did mention that during the deliberations.
Maybe at all more specific, were they on paper? Were they on three-by-threes? Were they in a work session? I, I'm sorry to push this hard, but this was a very, very painful adoption. I think everybody can agree with that, and that we can do better in the future. But when we break trust, or we have the perception of breaking trust, because then the result is the is the same, perception, reality, it takes us 10 times longer to earn it back. And I'm hugely concerned by this.
I can state for a fact that you were informed in a Friday memo in July, at the beginning of July, when it was mentioned in the deliberations, I believe it was during the work session.
Thank you. Other comments, questions, concerns from my colleagues? Director Pinkham.
And you had mentioned that this is more regards to instruction, not curriculum for this. Although there is a comment in the last paragraph, "This grant will help us enrich..." Page Five. "This grant will help us enrich the curriculum through professional development that incorporates a student's life experience and culture, and provide a structure delivered by high-quality culturally responsive educators." So this will impact the curriculum in a way.
Yes.
Yes.
Better instruction will impact the...
So that's how you're taking that. So just want to... When we say enrich the curriculum, it's not changing the curriculum, it's just adding more to it. Just want to make sure that's clarified.
I would agree, yes.
Director Burke.
One of the fun things we get to do down here, up here, over here, is to try to help break down the silos. So my question, in light of Director Pinkham's comment, is what is the intersection between this work and our ethnic studies work, which should be intentionally building on and within and through adoptions? Or either what is or what could be?
I mean, obviously, there will be connections between that. The ethnic studies work, we have an update coming to the CNI Committee in next week. And you'll find out that a lot of work has been done on that. We are waiting for Policy 2015 to get through, so that we can more quickly move through ethnic studies. And so there's a... Yes, the intersection's there.
Is there a science work group that's doing ethnic... On the ethnic studies group that can be kind of plugged into this?
So Director Burke, that was actually very astute of you to see that, because actually the component of this grant is specifically through ethnic studies. So when we're looking at culturally and linguistically diverse students, we are looking at students who have been marginalized from science experiences. And the intersection is definitely there, and the question you asked is the important one, will be, because the grant hasn't been accepted yet, and we were only awarded the grant in July. And so as soon as we have an opportunity to move forward, then those intersections will be daylighted even more. But as a very specific component of the grant, we think about culturally relevant teaching, pedagogy, and we also are looking at ethnic diversity and how to intersect those opportunities every place we can see them within the science curriculum.
May I follow up on that question, please? So does that mean, then, that we will be working with our Seattle Public Schools' ethnic Studies Department, not with the UW, not with some other entity?
That's correct.
Thank you.
Yes. Director Harris, in fact, there is an advisory committee that Dr. Debacker has already helped me to think about internally, who will be serving to help inform and to help guide the grant as we move forward, for those intersections to be more explicit.
And do we have any sense of how much of the money, or how much bandwidth, we'll be devoting to that?
To the ethnic studies component of it?
Yes, ma'am.
I would be guessing at this moment to tell you a percentage of it. It's a huge piece of what we need to focus on. That's what it means to be culturally and linguistically diverse focused. So indeed, it's an element that's essential to moving forward with the grant.
Thank you. Other comments, questions, concerns from my colleagues? Sting, non-roll call, please.
Director Geary.
Aye.
Director Mack.
Aye.
Director Pinkham.
Aye.
Director Burke.
Abstain.
Director DeWolf.
Aye.
Director Harris.
Abstain.
This motion is passed with a vote of four to zero to two.
Moving on, number three. Approval of the draft project agreement, quote, "Teacher Diversity Contract," end quote, between the City of Seattle, Department of Education and Early Learning, D E L, and the Seattle Public Schools, S P S, to diversify the educator workforce. This came before Audit and Finance, August 19th, for...
Approval.
Motion, please.
I move that the school board authorize the superintendent to execute the draft Teacher Diversity Contract with the Department of Education and Early Learning, and accept funds in the amount of $550,000 for the purposes of advancing diversity among the educator workforce.
Second.
Take it away, Chief Dr. Cod.
Yes, so Chief of Human Resources, Clover Cod, there have been no changes since introduction. I've received no questions from board directors or community regarding this board action report. I did introduction last time. If there are any questions, I'm happy to answer them at this moment.
I triple dog dare my colleague. Roll call, please.
Director Pinkham.
Aye.
Director Burke.
Aye.
Director Geary.
Aye.
Director DeWolf.
Aye.
Director Mack.
Aye.
Director Harris.
Aye.
This motion is passed unanimously.
Thank you.
Number four, and last, amendments to Superintendent Denise Juno's employment agreement to address performance compensation amounts for 2019, '20, and 2021, and base salary for 2019, '20, to Exhibit A, Performance Evaluation Compensation Criteria, to the superintendent's employment agreement, to change the bonus payment date from June 30th to September 30th, and define previously undefined terms and authorization for future salary discussions with the superintendent. This came before Executive Committee, August 21st, for approval. Motion, please.
I move that the board approve increasing the superintendent's base salary by 2% or $5,900 per 12 months, for a new base salary amount of $300,900. I move that this board set the performance compensation amount for the 2019-'20 school year at $15,000, for the 2021 contract year at $15,000. I move that the board approve amended Exhibit A to the superintendent's employment agreement, as attached in this board report. I move that the board authorize the board president and board vice president to have salary discussions with the superintendent connected to her salary and bonus increases, starting with the 2021 school year. Approval of this motion authorizes the board president to, one, execute Amendment Number Two to the superintendent's employment agreement, as attached to the board action report, and, two, execute amended Exhibit A to the superintendent's employment agreement, which shall replace Exhibit A with any minor additions, deletions, or modifications deemed necessary.
Second.
Mr. Serque, take it away.
Good evening, John Serque, Deputy General, Chief Counsel. At introduction, there were no questions from the school board members related to the bar that you have in front of you. Subsequently, Director Geary did ask that I clarify on the record two questions, so Superintendent Juno, feel free to jump in if you would like. The two questions are, what's the timeline for when the base data will be provided to the school board, and what's the timeline that that base data then will be evaluated in this current school year, the 1920 school year? And the second question relates to if the percentage increases, examples, 32% to 37%. So if, say, at the end of this year, it's the African-American males are at 40%, do you go from 40% to 45% the next school year? And the answer is yes. You don't go from 32% to 42%. You would start at the new base, which is whatever it ends up being, which is 40. If it's 40% in my hypothetical, then you would start... She would need to achieve a 45 in year two for African-American males. And I'll let maybe Denise Juno jump into the first question.
The way I read the amendment is that there are no timeframes put around the increase of improvement, and therefore, it would be fair to interpret a contract that it is a 5% increase from the signing of the contract. But it's 5% for both years, and it isn't saying 5% more, or 5% based upon a given year. There isn't a start date as to when the measure of the 5%. And especially in the second year. The first year, I don't have a concern about. It would be the second year. Is it two years to get to that 5%? And if you manage to get that first 5% in the second year, you get the bonus? Do you get the 5% if you only raise it 5% in the second year, but not the first year? There's just clarification around the start and the end and the measures that I... It seemed so simple. And I guess I'm a little perturbed, because I raised this exact issue in committee when it came up, or at some point, when I believe there was some discussion about this, this was the exact same thing that I raised. Because when I looked at it, I saw that it hadn't been addressed. So... And at that point, there was acknowledgement, I believe, that what we're looking at is that you need to get the 5% and the 3% in the first year to get the bonus, and then whatever, then at the starting of the next school year, it's from that point a 5% or a 3% increase.
Correct.
Based upon that individual school year.
Correct.
And that is your understanding?
Correct.
Okay. I just wanted that clarified somewhere in a record, so that at a future point, if there was a misunderstanding, we would all be able to look, I guess, here and not within the four corners of the document, which is... Makes me nervous.
Okay, so because it's based on ESBA, right? There is a year certain and a time certain when those scores come up in any given year. And so one of the amendments is we... The first contract basically said June would be the measurement of the baseline. So 30% in June, say, right?
Which June?
June of that year. And so say it's 30%. The reason there is an amendment to change that is because the ESBA scores actually aren't final-final until September, October of that year, that specific year. And that would... Great, and that would be the measurement. And then the next year would be, starting from that new baseline, onto the next year.
It always helps to clarify baseline when you're talking about a measurement and a timeframe.
Got it.
Director Mack.
I haven't raised this question with anyone yet, so it's new. I know that other folks have been having conversations around it, but the issue of the disaggregated data for the second one, I'm wondering if it's possible, as an information request, that even in spite of the fact that the measure is based on the aggregate 3%, if we could please have the data disaggregated when it is presented, so that we can see what's going on? Not that... I don't think that changes the intent, or the actual, you know, what the measure is, that it's three points on aggregate. But I think it'd be very informative for us as a district to be able to see that disaggregated data, and I know that lots of folks consistently ask for disaggregated data, and we want to make sure that we...
Of course. I mean, if it meets the threshold of being able to be presented publicly, we can definitely do that.
Right. If we don't have too many small student numbers, I get that, but thank you.
Director Burke, please.
That builds really well on a conversation that's been taking place over the last couple of days, and I... In the last couple of days, and then today. And so I want to thank Superintendent Juno and staff for helping get into the meat and potatoes of it. This question around disaggregating data, we have populations of our students that don't show up in our data. And so my feeling was, we should be disaggregating the data for this most visible and prominent level of oversight, you know, in our strategic plan, our leadership. And so I was going to propose an amendment to do that. When, in conversing with what that actually meant, for the... We have a 5% threshold for African-American males, third grade. We then have a 3% threshold for other students farthest from educational justice, all students farthest from educational justice. And the part of me focusing on those students that have not been elevated was, wow, we should not just be doing it as an aggregate, we should disaggregate. But when you think about what that actually means, it means that, well, each of those groups has to be above 3%. So it's certain that the aggregate is going to be significantly above 3%, because just the law of averages, some of them are going to be 3, some of them might be even higher. And it's a really big lift. And then also the fact that, you know, some of the small end sizes really vary a lot year to year. So there's a lot of kind of statistical variation as that comes through. So I appreciate Director Mack's request to have it be part of the discussion, and maybe that would be something that in future negotiations, if there was a certain threshold or a certain way to do that, that made statistical sense. But I just wanted to elevate the importance of looking at those numbers. And I did determine, after looking at that analysis, that it was not... Would not be in the best interest for us as a district, or for our leadership, to have that actually be an amendment.
Any other questions, comments, concerns? Director Pinkham, thank you.
Yeah. Yeah, it's one of the things that I brought up when I was looking at this, was brought for introduction about, you know, okay, well, what if the other students, you know, totally they were 3% or above, but there was still one group that might have declined or didn't improve as much? So I appreciate the ask, if we can share all the data, and hopefully we'll learn from that data. Oh, look, this one group didn't do as well, so our next year's strategy, we need to make sure we pull those students up, that they don't keep on falling behind, that we're being more in a purposeful... Here's a group, African-American, they raised by 6%. Great, but there's still this other population that's dropping every year. Maybe the target of universalism needs to not... Working as well as we thought it would. We need to see what we can do for groups that are still maybe falling behind. So that's why, yeah, I appreciate people asking that we disaggregate this information. We'll stick with the language here, that overall 3%, but if you can see that other data, I think it will help inform me better as to how we are doing truly for all of our students.
Any other questions, comments, concerns? I have no doubt that we will meet these goals. I have no doubt that our very capable staff will assist the superintendent in meeting these goals. And I have no doubt that implanting a bonus into the superintendent's contract was a good idea then, and is a good idea now, and it is not done by very many districts. And I'm very proud of the fact that we did do so, and that you agreed to say, and came to join us in our quest for the future of our children. Roll call, please.
Director Burke.
Aye.
Director DeWolf.
Aye.
Director Geary.
Aye.
Director Mack.
Aye.
Director Pinkham.
Aye.
Director Harris.
Aye.
This motion is passed unanimously.
And this meeting is adjourned at 6:38 PM. Thank you all.